Okay, ladies and gentlemen, would you please rise? And join with me as we say the pledge to our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you pray with me, please? Our Father in Heaven, we just want to praise you tonight for a new year, a new beginning, a new start, starting fresh, and we just want to thank you for this council. We just ask that you bless them tonight. We just seek you, Father, in our wisdom and in our understanding of situations, and we ask your guidance in all things that we make decisions over. We also, Father, want to thank you for this night because it's special, because we have so many volunteers here that make this town great, and we just want to praise you for them and thank you for their diligence and their hours of work in making this community what it is. And thank you, Father, for their lives. We ask that you bless them as well. We pray this all in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please be seated. Call to order our Guthrie Public Works Authority meeting, first meeting of 2016. Do we have any public announcements? Comments? No? Then we will move into item number 2A, which is volunteer recognition, which I have the privilege of starting our recognition ceremony for 2015. You know, volunteers in any organization play a critical role, especially in communities, communities of our size. Volunteers are the backbone of our city government in many, many ways. And tonight, we are recognizing actually 109 names I'm going to be calling off for over the next couple of hours. No, it'll go faster than that. But 109 names of volunteers, some who have given a number of hours, some who have given many, many hours in support of a special place, in support of making Guthrie, America, better. And they do it consistently, they do it without pay, and yet they are priceless, these volunteers that we're going to recognize tonight. A very, very special group of people for our community, for all the citizens, things that they do to bring a special perspective, to bring their experiences, to bring their vision, to assist city government and all of us, again, in making Guthrie a better place. So it's a special night for a group of special people. I'm going to be reading off names, not in any particular order, but by, of course, by the board or commission that they are on. We've asked that the department head of the city department that that board or commission works closely with to come up to the front and give each one of the volunteers a special recognition, a candle and a key, certainly recognizing, in my mind, anyway, individuals that help light the way and, in many ways, hold the key to the city. And so, again, a special, special group of people. And first group I'd like to recognize is the Board of Adjustments. And Cody Mosley, the Director of Community and Economic Development, is going to be assisting with handing them the little recognition. And so as I call your name, if you would please come forward, receive that from Cody or whoever is going to be there, that would really work out great. So individual Kerry Owens, who is past chair. Joe Chappell? Vern Ogden? Michael O'Neill? Catherine Porter? The Historic Preservation Committee Commission, I'm sorry, Historic Preservation Commission, Aaron Brown Chair? Sandra Bothroyd, past chair? Amy Loh, lock? C. Kim Mahoney? Doug Powell? Planning Commission, Doug Powell Chair? Joe Chappell? Joe Coffin? Ed French? Vern Ogden? The Guthrie Transportation Authority, Justin Fortney Chair? Brian Bothroyd? Just checking to see if you were still with us?
Why do I get another one?
You're on that authority.
That's yours, wife.
You have been, at least for a portion of last year. I know you had to go off when you became the council, but before that, you were on that authority. Yvonne Johnson?
I'm still on that authority.
Rebecca Pittman? The Convention and Visitors Bureau, Debbie Prather Chair? Kathy Cordis? Justin Fortney? Scott Haas? James Long?
You're going to start a fire, man.
Dan Newton? Stacy Staden? Trey Woods? Okay, the members of the Park Board, and Maxine Pruitt, the Municipal Services Director, will be assisting in giving out those recognitions. Zachary Calorio? Calorio? Calorio, I was right the first time. Ben Coffin? Mary Beth Craven? Jean LaCina? The Forestry Board, Roberta Burns Chair? Michael Fries? Tim Poindexter? The next group is the Library Advisory Board. Suzette Chang is going to be assisting with that. Suzette, who has just recently joined this great team. Linda Kratic Chair? Amanda Fortney? Nikki Kiesler? Verla Rains? And the Friends of the Library Group, Kelvin Selman? Well, we will recognize all of them, though, unless you want to receive a candle for all Terry Wilson? Donna Wilson? Frances Foster? Ada Schneider? Linda Belsinger? Michael Fries? Del Woodruff? Nancy Brown? Sylvia Oaks? The next group is the Guthrie Edmond Regional Airport Board. Shalon Stanley will be distributing these recognitions. Trey Ayers? Richard Geib? Cheryl Paget? She's coming.
I'll meet you halfway.
The next group is the Citizens Rate and Fee Advisory Committee. Kim Biggs, the City Clerk, will be assisting with this. Bob Davis Chair? Tina Hayworth? Jean LaCina? Adam Leathers? Andrea Welsh? Lori White? Next group is the Guthrie Housing Authority. Laurel Davis? Jonathan McLean? Merlina Osborne? Jim Reeser? The next group of volunteers, all volunteer at the animal shelter, Chief Swaggers, or who's going to do that? I don't care. You can both do that. Go ahead. Both of you, all three of you if you want. Yes. Do a great job. All right, Chief, you ready?
We're ready.
Okay, all right. This should be some good pictures here. Are there any more Caulfields in the house? He will accept them. Exander Charles? Anastasia Linsum? Blaze Rollins? Hope Watkins? Okay, the next group of volunteers are the reserve police officers, and Chief, you'll be staying right there. These volunteers, Lieutenant Jones, Butch, Hilling? Sergeant Michael Wellington? Sergeant Troy Westmoreland? Officer Gary Robinson? Officer Charlie McMenamy? The, Chief, why don't you stay right there? We have a couple more to present.
He's not going to do it.
He was serious.
No, we'll both do this. Our honorary pastor, Tom Reepi. He prays very hard for us. Thank you every time. Every time. And then, you bet, and then with the GTV-20, Bill Miracle? No, no, you're doing such a good job. Well, actually, Sue Ducharme, Sue? Would you, the next group is a great partner with the community, Neighborhood Solutions.
He's running away.
He's giving the, giving the job to you. Anyway, Neighborhood Solutions does an outstanding job of partnering with the community to make some very special things happen in the community, and so we wanted to recognize them, although it's not an official committee, if you will, or board or commission, certainly is a significant partner, and we want to recognize the many volunteers that work there. Joe Chappell? Jim Fish? Bo Martin? Sherri Mueller? Kerry Owens? Jerry Weeks? Jerry Welch? Karen Yancy? And of course, Sue Ducharme? Did I miss one?
You did.
I am very, very sorry. OJ Myers?
We didn't know if he made it or not.
I'm glad it was just my British.
Well, I think we should give all of the volunteers the 109... 109 individuals that, again, contribute significantly to our community, make us better every year, and do it, again, without pay, but what they do is indeed priceless. So thank you very much for a great 2015 year of volunteerism, and we, the city, all look forward to 2016 and replicate your efforts or even enhance them. So again, thank you so very, very much. We greatly appreciate your time, your efforts, and what you contribute to all of our community. Thank you. For those of you that would like to stay, we're going to continue on with our agenda. But if you have other items, other things that you need to do, you can certainly leave and take some cake with you if you'd like. The third item on our Guthrie Public Works Authority meeting is Consent Agenda, Consent Agendas Number A, B, and C. A is the approval of our last minutes of December 15th. B is the approval of a receipt of permit for construction of 1,061 linear feet of pipe for sanitary sewer line. And C is the approval of the award of the auditing services to HBC, PCA advisors to do auditing services for 2016.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the three consent agenda items. Is there any other discussion? Please submit your vote, please. Let's read the votes. Unanimous of all those present to approve those three consent agenda items. With that, our Guthrie Public Works Authority meeting is adjourned, and we are calling to order our City Council meeting. And again, do we have any items for public comment or community announcement? Anything else? No? Okay. On our consent agenda, we have two items on the consent agenda. It's item number two, and consent agenda items A and B, which is the approval of the minutes, and B, which is the, again, approval of the award for auditing services to HBC, CPA, or CPAs.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, submit your vote.
I'll vote for it.
See the vote. Unanimous by board members present, council members present, to approve those two consent agenda items. Item number three, discussion, possible action to authorize staff to prepare and file a rezoning application. Do we have staff comments?
Yeah, I think we had made mention of this at one point in time, that we'd want to rezone that area, and this is the formal beginning of that process. We have to answer any questions if there are any.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any other discussion? Okay, submit your vote, please.
I'll vote for it.
See the vote. Again, unanimous to authorize staff to prepare and file a rezoning application for the area surrounding Johnson Drive. City manager report?
Yeah, one item. We finalized our citizen survey, and we had 891 people respond. We sent out nearly 4,000. That's nearly 25% rate back. That's incredible for our community. They did an excellent job of indicating the areas they'd like to see serviced if we get our capital improvement sales tax approved on February of the 9th. I've already started talking with the news page and the news leader, and we'll get that information out for the public to see exactly how they voted and what they voted for. Then we'll get a list of the projects together based upon that council's discretion and any comments by the staff, and put together the list of the projects that we'll be going after. So I just want to make a comment that we're very thankful of everybody who submitted their thoughts and concerns on that survey about what the greatest needs are in the community, and overwhelming response, and it's a good thing we have a lot of needs because we got a lot of work to do.
We sure do. Item number five is comments, requests from members of the City Council. Ms. Taylor?
Yes, Betty Foster's funeral will be Friday at 2:00, so if anybody wants to go, it'll be at the First Christian Church, and I hate to say it, we've lost a good person. Betty was one of my favorites, and I used to help preach down when I was a little kid down at Squire's baseball field. We'd work the fields and get things ready, so it's somebody that I know a lot of people locally know who she was, and so she will be dearly missed. Other than that, thank you, guys, for all the work you do, whether it's the police, fire, and the city crew. I know you guys are still hauling out tree limbs and some things like that. Are you getting close to the end of that? Yeah, I know, I've seen a lot of them going up and down because I carry down Academy there, so I see a lot of trucks still heading up and down the road, so I appreciate all y'all do. And then, other than that, that's it.
Councilwoman Paget?
I hope you have a happy new year.
I do. In fact, I'd like to brag just a little bit on First Capital Neighborhood Solutions. I don't think a lot of people know exactly what they do or how active they are here in Guthrie, but they have distributed $106,500 for home improvements, items like doors and sinks and commodes and toilets, different things that people need in their homes through donations from Home Depot. So that is one thing. They have served 131 clients in the year of 2015, which is an average of $813 per family that came and requested help that we've been able to help. They also administer the USDA loans for homes, and the two homes closed for $177,000. They were two single mothers, and there's one that will close, I think, January 30th, to another single mother. So this is an organization that has really, really helped Guthrie. It's been a huge benefit, and the staff works their little fannies off. They do a great job, and the volunteers are the best. Thank you, guys.
Do a great job. Unsung heroes in many ways.
Yes. Yes.
Councilman John Wood?
A couple of things. I want to thank Bruce on...We had a water...The water tower by the Sky Strike Temple had a lot of graffiti on it, and we got that painted over, so it looks nicer and...
Hey, in my heart of heart, vanilla still loves pot. I always know it's there.
That's what it said, yeah, yeah. But, you know, that's a high-traffic area, especially the Sky Strike Temple, and so I think it's great that we were able to finally fix that. And I want to thank him for that survey. I think it's really important, something I've been pushing for for a while, is to have a survey so we have a sense of what the community wants for that sales tax, and we had a great response. And I think it's really important that we got the response, because it tells us a lot about how there's a lot of need out there, and people do perceive those needs. So thanks, Bruce, for that. And I just want to thank the community volunteers. We had a lot of folks here. Without these folks, Neighborhood Solutions, all our different boards and commissions, we really couldn't do what we do at all. So it's not just us up here, it's not just the people who are city...the city employees, but our volunteers. There's just no way we could do it without you, so I appreciate you. Thank you.
That's it. Councilman Buthred?
Yeah, I'll echo exactly what John said. All of the boards and commissions are critical. Most of us have served on them in one former fashion, and we know it just keeps the city running. So I want to thank all of them. I want to thank all the city staff. And in particular, I want to thank one person, because, you know, when the 63rd Council came on, we...this...everybody seated here, including Ed, who's not here, we had adversity from the beginning. We lost a city manager. You know, we had to get things going, and Bruce is the one that did that, stood up to the challenge. I think a lot of the community likes Bruce. A lot of the feedback that I get, I've heard no negative feedback whatsoever, and I think we're lucky to have him. And just give him a quick clap.[1471.13][1471.13](Applause).
I get paid, I'm not volunteering.[1474.21][1474.21](Laughter).
Councilman Thomas?
Did he get a candle?
Yeah.
Get him a candle. I get a lot more than that.
We may get him a candle.
He's got some leftovers there. I don't want to have anything to add. I think everybody covered everything real well. I'm looking forward to 2016 and getting a lot of things accomplished. Let's do it.
Just a couple things. Bruce identified the results of the survey, and I think that was...I think just the results themselves, just the number of responses tells something about our community, because that's a really high response rate for that kind of a survey. And so hats off to the citizenry that did respond. I think we have some plans to do some town hall meetings, to have more dialogue with the community, identify more...some of the things that your council would like to do if this sales tax is in fact approved, things that are extremely important for our future, extremely important for the vision that we all have for making Guthrie great. And so look for those. Look for those dates. They're gonna be, I believe, hopefully, one in each of the wards, and then maybe one general one, and we can have a lot more dialogue and discussion, a lot of education about what this money would go for. So look for those, but again, we've taken a great first step. The 109 volunteers that we named off today, I think almost mirrors one-for-one. I think we have a little bit more than that of employees, but about that same number of city employees. I am not sure that there's any community in the state that would have a one-for-one ratio of volunteers for staff. And I think that's also a reflection on our community, and so hats off to all the...hats off to the volunteers, and hopefully we can even expand those roles in 2016. Having said that, we also have some opportunities. And this latest group of opportunities was listed in the little bulletin that comes out with the utility bill. It's on the city website, but we have opportunities for volunteers in the Board of Adjustments, the Forestry Advisory Board, the Library Board, the Park Board, the Historic Preservation Commission, and the Transportation Authority. So we have lots of opportunities. If you want to get a candle, we might be able to work something out for you, Bruce, in your spare time. That one...that one hour that he's got spare time. But anyway, seriously, to the viewing public, those...the Board of Adjustments, Forestry, Library, Park, Historic Preservation, and Transportation Board all have opportunities for volunteerism as board or committee member...commission members. So take advantage of that, if you will. Go to the website, call one of your councilmen if you want more information on any of those Okay, item number six on our agenda is consider the approval to convene into executive session for two items, confidential communication concerning pending investigations.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to move into executive session. Please submit your vote.
I'll vote Trent.
Unanimous by all those councilmen present. We will see you later as we adjourn into our executive session. Okay, we are back in session and taking up item number seven, which is the action considering the initiative position. Petition.
My recommendation, Mayor, is that since the courts have determined that the Guthrie Public Works Authority is a separate legal entity which manages and controls the utilities of the city of Guthrie, and because an election would be costly and unnecessary in that event, that no action be taken tonight on this item. So no motion will be necessary, unless somebody wants to do something differently.
Is there any other discussion on that? It's a no motion...we don't need to take a motion on that, then?
No action will be taken.
No action to be taken. Okay. Item number eight, which is considering action in the case concerning Mar...Bruning.
Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize the city to appeal the decision in the Bruning case and for the city manager to continue negotiations.
Second. We have that motion, we have a second. Is there any further discussion on this item? Please submit your vote.
I'll vote Trent.
Let's read the vote. Unanimous by all members present to appeal that decision and give the city manager authority for continued negotiation. With that, ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned. Thank you.